Hi. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome. I'd like to call to order this Monday, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three Lake County School Board Workshop. Since we're going to also be meeting again following this for our regularly scheduled meeting, we'll go ahead and defer our moment of silence and pledge of allegiance until that time, so I know we've got a lot of ground to cover in this particular meeting. I don't see any public input cards up here, so I guess we're ready to go ahead and get started. Three point oh one is a property insurance broker discussion. Scott, are you kicking us off with that?
I will kick this off with that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, this is, yeah, this is on. So Chairman, Board Members, and Superintendent, if you recall last year in our renewal process for insurance, property casualty insurance, there was a desire by the board to go out and look for a, some markets and opportunities to see what we could do to check to make sure that we were doing our due diligence with the programs that we had for insurance. And so we did that. We did an invitation to negotiate, and, and I'm going to turn it over to Ali in just a minute to let him go through that process and discuss it with you briefly, and then we're here for any kind of questions that you have. I did want to say that there are several representatives from the company that are in the audience, so if you do have a specific question to them, they are available. So with that being said, this is Ali Zachary, our purchasing manager, and he will take it over from here.
Thank you, Scott. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, superintendent, the invitation to negotiate was issued on November third, two thousand twenty-two. We're seeking proposals from qualified insurance firms for the purpose of conducting review of the district's current insurance policies, providing recommendations and advice regarding insurance needs, and secure insurance on behalf of the district. Our policies are due to, for renewal this July of two thousand twenty-three.
Okay.
We have received bids from four vendors, Alliant Insurance Services, Brown or Brown, A.J. Gallagher, and Lassiter Ware. We reviewed all four of them. However, Brown or Brown decided at the end to withdraw The scope of the services was given to you ahead of time in the invitation to negotiate is spelled out on pages two and three of the present, of the invitation. It's mired of things that we required the winning company to perform for us. Evaluation criteria was also spelled out on page seven of the invitation that included the qualifications from the firms, team innovation, responsiveness to request its scope, the cost, and references, and each criterion was spelled out exactly what we were looking for and evaluated accordingly. Followed the evaluation, we invited all four of them to come and conduct a presentation for us, and the focus on the presentation was on innovation plan design, cost avoidance, technology resources to enhance proactive risk management for the district. And, and then we scored, and the scores were given. Yeah, this is different.
Okay, gotcha.
So the scores were given, and as you can see, the average score for A.J. Gallagher was eighty-eight. Alliant was eighty-six, Brown or Brown sixty-seven and a half, and Lassiter Ware fifty-five point seven five. That's based on the proposals that provided for us for evaluation that are in front of you for consideration.
Are there any questions that you guys have specific for us based on the information that we gave?
Board members? Any? So I'll have some questions for the, the individual respondents, but I don't think I have any at this point for, for Ali. Thank you. That was really good work. Appreciate it. I, I just, I just had the one, and I was, I was struggling to figure out what we had currently been paying for this service. I saw that there are many of the proposals that we'll be looking at today have a couple of options, whether it's commission-based or flat fee-based, and can you share where we are now with that?
Rob. This is Rob Oyer, our risk manager.
So basically, we're, currently, the contract with Brown and Brown reads up to ten percent, somewhere between five and ten percent, has been the historical pay, but we don't have a written contract anymore on the books, so it's kind of an estimate based on what our total cost is, and if you look at the worst case, that's about two hundred thousand dollars of the ten percent, out of the two million that we pay for property.
Okay.
Paid two point three, right?
That's correct, sir.
And just, just to kind of give the board a little bit of background, as we were going through this process, obviously, we had a couple of major hurricanes hit Florida, which always hardened the market very substantially. So all four of the people who are companies that responded to this all warned us that we should expect an increase. So this, there's no cost savings measure as we're going to lose, or we're going to save any money in the upcoming year. We know that we're going to end up paying more, but the idea of trying, of trying to find the, the company that will best serve the district and help us come up with ways to mitigate against some of that increase.
Do you know the value on the books right now of our real estate?
I do. Now, off the top of my head, Rob may know that.
Yeah, the current evaluation is just over two billion. I think it's two point one billion. We're constantly adjusting that number down between looking at what something is actually valued at versus what it was projected to be valued at, and then we were also working on constantly reevaluating based on the new market and replacement costs, so that number continues to increase as costs go up, so it's fluid.
Rob, if I may.
Yes.
I, I think we're currently somewhere in the neighborhood of one point three billion in value after the appraisals and after the, the changes that were made is the numbers that I had.
Okay. Yeah, like I said.
They wrote a two point five million in premium.
Yep.
For the line.
Two point five.
Instead of two point three, two point five. So, thank you.
Thanks, Tyler.
Yep, no problem.
All right. Any, anybody else? Questions for our staff?
I have a question for Tyler. Clarification, did you say two point five million?
Uh, two point five million in, in premium for the, the quoted lines or the, the requested lines. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
It's about twenty percent.
Sorry?
It's about twenty percent of our total. Is that what you gathered from that?
Twenty percent of what?
The total of, of our assets, the one point three.
Yeah, so we've got one point three billion in, and it's about a twenty cent property rate currently, so you have twenty percent.
Yeah, that's what I said. Okay. And then the, the commission is about ten percent, or what we pay.
The, the current's a five percent structure is what the current is based off of.
The, the ten percent's a maximum.
Okay, thank you. I was like, I'm doing the math here, Tyler. And it's, okay.
So is it five or ten percent? You said both numbers.
Currently, it is, currently, it is five percent. So the ten percent number came when they used to handle our health also, and so whenever they stopped handling our health insurance, they negotiated back down to around five percent, and it's been pretty steady since then. But if you look at the contract language that we had, that's no longer in effect, it says up to ten percent. So it's between five and ten.
That's a pretty good spread.
When you talk about two billion, right? It's never been two million.
Sure. All right. Good with our staff?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yes.
All right. So I guess with that, I believe, is each insurance broker here to present?
We invited them here. There's not, we did not ask them for a specific presentation or anything, because we had already gone through that process, but we just told them that if they'd like, they could be available to answer any specific questions.
All right, very good.
If needed.
Real quick, I, I think this is more a question for James, but is the goal of today's session for the board to then come up with a recommendation after asking any questions we may have?
So, yeah, the, so the goal of today is for you guys to kind of give a, some type of indication to the superintendent as the recommendation that she'll need to make to bring back to the board, and James could speak more on that.
Yeah, give her some guidance as to what, how to form a recommendation. If you, if you want her to focus on something specific, if you want, you know, looking more into something, you know, specific, things like that. So if you have additional questions, you want follow-up by the applicants, things like that.
Okay. And did you have any other guidance you need to impart on us before we begin this process?
Uh, just to make sure that there's, there's, this is not a, a actionable meeting, so there's no knocking anybody out or, or saying, I like this one over this one. Just keep it very fact-finding. You're gathering information, and then we'll, we'll likely address this at a subsequent board meeting, likely on the twenty-seventh or later.
All right. Excellent. Thank you very much. Should we proceed alphabetically? So, I think Alliant would be first in that list, then. Perhaps it may be worthwhile for us to invite Representative Forward and Board has any questions for the representative, and would you please introduce yourself?
Of course. Good afternoon, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to answer your questions. My name is Philippe Garcia, and I'm with Alliant Insurance Services.
We're almost, we're almost looking at you, Tyler. Inspire us, inspire us to something profound here.
Send me some credit balls. Let's do it.
No worries. All pretty straightforward. First of all, thank you for your response. Very thorough, very clear that you've got a lot of experience in this field across the nation. What, what experience do you have in Florida specifically?
Great question. So I've been here six years now, in Florida specifically, and I helped open up our public entity office within the Lake Mary, Orlando region. So historically speaking, we were more on other avenues on the commercial space, commercial property, rather than public entity. I personally am the primary broker for several entities here, including the County Port Authority, who have worked with seven years. Jack's Port is another organization, and Naples Airport Authority. We've actually brought in a Willis Team Tower pooling practice that, through that transition, they actually represent the Florida School Board's Insurance Trust, which is our largest public entity client in the state of, of Florida currently. We do education all across the country. Obviously, we do TASB. I work with the London Public School System, Chicago Public Schools, but specifically in Florida, those are the organizations we work with.
Yeah, I think from the response, it was Florida School Board Insurance Trust and then the Kip schools up in Jacksonville.
And the Kip, yeah, Kip Jacks in Miami.
For the school districts in Florida. Perfect.
And that's just a national, but it includes, yep.
All good. And if you could, just briefly, what do you think about a, a pooled arrangement versus an individual placement, so like a FISBIT option or going out on our own?
Of course. That's a great question, because I, I've been at Alliant. I think it'll make sense to kind of give you a little bit of my history. Being here for twelve years, I've worked since day one with public entities, and, you know, not just in the southeast, southeast, but across the country. I actually got my experience working with public entities, specifically with pools. I work with Utah Local Governance Trust, Atlanta, Alaska Municipal, Hollywood, Rhode Island Interlocal Trust. I, I'm a fan of the pooling structure when it comes to situations where there isn't really a lot of opportunity to buy on, on, on a one placement option. And when there is, are, when you experience cat events, for example, historically in Florida, you'll not take that historically speaking, the big broker names here are Gallagher, you know, the Brown and Browns of the world, because historically speaking, there weren't a lot of options in the past, and a lot of pools were born because it was the most cost-effective avenue for public entities to purchase insurance. I'm a fan of the pooling structure, but one thing that we did at Alliant that's a little bit different is we created the group purchase model. We use a group purchase model, but without the risk for assessments. So we've actually developed that Alliant programs that you can access through us that doesn't require any type of risk sharing, if that makes sense, that, you know, in case the program doesn't perform well, doesn't mean you're going to be assessed and charged for it in later years, nor the opposite. You won't benefit from dividends in the program. It's direct, it's a direct placement for your organization. So one of the things that we were thinking about is we represent FISBIT, and, you know, whether that's an option now or an option later, it's neat to be able to bring forth not just pool options, direct market options, London Bermuda options, but also group purchase options. Actually, I might look tired. I just flew in last night from London, so I wanted to make sure to be here in time for the meeting, but was able to get firsthand, you know, a knowledge of what the market is and what's, what's going on, because it's crazy times. But it's not as crazy as I thought it was. I can tell you that.
Now, are, is Lake County Schools eligible to join FISBIT now?
Not at this moment in time. That actually was a conversation, because, again, we work with pools across the country, and we don't ever want to go after a member or a potential member, what we call a prospect, for that pool, because that's our client. We, we got their permission to pursue you directly and with the understanding of, even though it's not an option now, could be later.
Awesome. And is it fair to say that we aren't an option for FISBIT on the table besides the, the risk strategies and plan design options just because of hurricane damage and kind of what was sustained in that storm? Is that?
Say that one more time.
So is, is the reason why Lake County Schools isn't an option for FISBIT now because of storm damage and things that happened in the past year that's affecting?
That's part of it, but we've actually looked at quoting the program, but there were some more, there's some requirements for, 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 to be a member of FISBIT that I don't think were in line with what your current structure is.
Oh, good. And then, all right, so based on the, the current appraised number, somewhere in the range of one point three billion in value, and I think we're at like a twenty cent property rate over two point five million in premium, let's call it, what do you expect for two thousand twenty-three?
So that's a great question. I sat in several, with several London syndicates, because I took a couple of clients out that are not just Florida. One of them is in Louisiana Bay School District Lafayette, because they're, they've had some losses, and we're, you know, making sure that we're in line and setting the right expectation for our clients. So London syndicates were actually, a lot of them unfortunately are renewing their reinsurance treaties in April first, so we won't really know what's going to happen until then. However, the one comfort that I did get, well, they mentioned this number. They said minimum twenty to thirty-five percent is going to be flat, good, not, cat exposed, good loss accounts, minimum, okay? That's what we kept hearing. But you have to also realize is, let's say, about November of last year, everyone was freaking out, because we're like, you know, one one's coming up. We have some accounts that were renewed January first, some all to April first, and we were thinking multiple hundred percents. We didn't know where this was going to go. So I can tell you that it's going to be a difficult year. There's a tremendous push to valuation. That's not changing. But I, I recall you have made some efforts to make sure that you're valued appropriately. If not, there could be resulting some endorsements, like having a friendly Jurassic co-insurance clause or some type of clause in there to limit some of the liability. But I can tell you, it's, it's not as bad as I thought it was going to be, but it's going to be a difficult year. You have to go just beyond trending, like not just doing Marshall Swift trending. They're really pushing for onsite appraisals. So working for an organization like us, that's something that we would be able to help you with.
How often do you recommend appraisals?
So before, the, the timeline used to be about every seven years, five to seven years. I would say every three to five.
Okay.
Right now especially. And, you know, let's say, beginning of last year to the year before, we were looking at a push to valuation. So if your broker hopefully did a good job of setting, hey, let's say you're undervalued, let's say thirty percent, instead of absorbing that all in one policy, you're doing a step-up process and having the carriers agree that, you know, ten per year makes sense. The problem is, a lot of people didn't do that, and so now we're dealing with the difficult hardened property marketplace coupled with, you know, the, that, you know, gap in valuation.
I think fortunately, we just did appraisals this past year, so I think we should be okay.
Then that you'll be, yeah.
When it's time to do it again, if we go with you, is that covered under your fee? Is that an additional cost for those appraisals?
So the appraisals, the actual onsite appraisals would be an additional fee, because one of the things is, we, Alliant are brokers. We don't own any intermediaries. So our, our competitors, for example, like when they have to access London markets or certain markets, they can use their own intermediaries and collect commissions that way. We don't do that. So when we hire an appraising company, like, let's say, a Duff and Phelps, you know, we don't own them. We have onsite appraisal processes, so let's say, you say, I want to value buildings over ten million or more, or five million or more. We're able to do that in-house. We could also do desktop appraisals. You do Marshall Swift Trending Factor type of utilization that, you know, other brokers do.
Cool. So you're projecting somewhere in the twenty to thirty percent rate increase range?
Correct, but that's, that's, yeah, we're talking floor for cat exposed.
Three million plus in, in your estimate.
Yeah, but I would be a little bit more aggressive. I would be a little bit more conservative than that, just because of the, even if you don't have losses, the market is where, where it is. And again, the biggest thing right now that we're seeing is not just the push on rate, but also the limit on capacity. So I'm not privy to how you handle your, how much name windstorm you purchase, but when you do the modeling and you do the AIR, whatever report you do, the PML study can come back and say, hey, you just need fifty million in wind. Well, I'm seeing markets going from fifty million, and the max they're providing is twenty-five, so to find that new capacity is not inclusive in that twenty to thirty percent minimum range, if that makes sense.
Yeah, current, we're in a pooled arrangement with Preferred Governmental Insurance Trust. I think there's two hundred and forty million in, in wind limits for the pool, all the membership in there. And I think that the last model I saw was somewhere in that twenty-five to fifty range for the two hundred and fifty-year storm, and that was kind of my concern moving forward.
Is how are you going to be able to meet that?
How are we going to get that capacity? What, what's going to happen to terms and conditions? What's going to happen to deductibles?
Yeah.
How does all that switch just to get to the same number, and how much more risk are we, are we bearing by leaving a pooled arrangement and looking at something on our own where we've got, in, in normal years, it seems like we've got more of the, the upside potential.
Correct.
And the loss history appears to have been good for, for now, but just a matter of what, what's the best long-term option, and how do we mitigate those costs while still?
Those are the important discussions to have, because, again, when we bring up an option for our clients, it could be direct. It could be some kind of, you know, syndicated structured property program with London Bermuda Domestic Markets. It could also be pools. I actually, Naples Airport Authority, although a smaller, smaller organization, I'm not going to say small, because this is being recorded. They're amazing. They unfortunately were impacted last, you know, last year, and so with Ian, it was actually one of the things where they were coming out of, Hammeras was no longer going to renew them. So we had to find an alternative solution that made sense for their budget and also provided the coverage they needed. So I actually have a partnership with PRM, which is another pool here. They're, they're a member now of PRM, and it still made sense, and obviously PRM is paying, so.
I think one of the big benefits was the modeling and all the analytics that, that a lot of the respondents offered, specifically on the Archipelago and some of the other technology resource platforms. If we choose, if we were to go with you and take like a, the flat fee option, for example, would that be included in that fee?
Yes.
Or is that a different?
It's included.
Okay.
And that's why we, every year, every time, we try to, we evolve, because, you know, there's emerging risks. There's such thing as emerging risks, so we want to make sure that we're in line with the technology that's available and make it easy for you to access.
Beautiful. Last couple that I've got for you was, was now more on the, the price structure side on the, the fee arrangement. So I, I like the idea of either a flat fee or the commission percentage option. So if we back into the, the two twenty-five flat fee number versus the seven percent that was offered, so it looks like, based on that, we're looking at the break-even being at about three point two million in premium. So that's a, based on what we already talked about, you think that's a pretty fair assessment, given the market and where we are?
And again, remember, our, we're very transparent when it comes to compensation. We don't get paid in other avenues. We don't own any wholesalers, so Alliant doesn't connect, collect any more revenue than that.
So if we were to go the two twenty-five option, for example, that's, that's the most we're going to pay for any placements on any side over the policy term?
Now, if we do, for example, use a London, like an intermediary, like a Amwins, for example, or Howden, you know, they will collect commissions like in the traditional insurance market. I can't control that.
Right.
Nobody can. But in terms of Alliant, zero.
Well, you, you did reference that in the, in the proposal, was that if you couldn't get a, an excess quote net of commissions, that you would then back that up to two twenty-five?
Then we would rebate it. Correct.
But even if you can collect it, it's still going to that max of two twenty-five.
Correct.
That's the top dollar we would pay.
I like simplicity, simplicity, simplicity is what I say.
Appreciate that.
These are good questions.
Thank you. Only other thing I had.
Why is it the board?
At the very end, was just in the appendix and in the disclosures, there was one on that indirect income, where it appeared that if there were any compensation incentives for insurers, any contingent commissions, market service agreements, volume-based commissions, et cetera, that Alliant would, would accept those.
Yeah, so we, that's like our legal disclaimer. Really what it is, is we have to fill out a form that says if you allow for contingent income or cannot, so your account would be a cannot accept contingent income. Gets processed, and we won't.
Well done. Thank you for an inspirational start, and, you know, I actually had a couple of those questions written down, so I feel a lot smarter at this moment in time, so. All right. We'll come back to you if you have any others. Bill, do you have anything on your mind?
I sat through the presentation, so.
All right.
Pretty much, I'm listening.
Okay, very good. How about you, Stephanie?
No, I appreciate the fee-based structure conversation.
All right. Molly, anything?
No, thank you.
So just a, just a question I had, because I was, I was looking back at some of the comments left by staff, and I think some had offered some, some praise for your company's ability to identify programs that reduce cost, and so I was, I was just wondering if you might be able to provide an example of either, maybe even from another district, of some bit of cost avoidance that you see might be able to be applied here?
Well, the- Well, the the biggest thing is we're we're looking at, when we look at a risk, we look at the total cost of risk and we understand that premium premium is part of that, right? We look at deductible retention structures and what that looks like and what your loss history will justify whether it makes sense for you as an organization to take on more risk. Similar like whether it makes sense to be in a pooled structure and right, doing the modeling and saying, yes, it's a it's a shared wind limit in a pool. How would that look like in a situation like Hurricane Ian where maybe the public members, the membership is highly concentrated in the Gulf area, for example? It's really important to take a deep dive and and when we're looking at, I consider myself and our colleagues, we always make fun of ourselves, we call themselves kind of insurance nerds. You know, we we love and really dive into the coverage. So we do this a couple of ways. Insurance shouldn't be your first line of defense, your contract should be. So one thing that we do is we actually look at your contracts and we've developed and we've shared with Scott, the insurance requirements in contracts. Manual, it's like a 200 page document, whenever you have time to read it, I I recommend that you do. And it gives you guidance on how to word the indemnification language in a contract, what kind of limit requirements should you require from, let's say, an IT vendor for a photographer or caterer coming to one of your schools. So we look at those and make recommendations and make sure that, you know, that the the help is there. We look at the insurance coverage and make sure that you have the adequate limits and the adequate types of coverage. For example, um, something that often doesn't gets missed, for example, on a crime coverage, faithful performance, adding volunteers as as employees. There's a lot of little endorsements that are added. I'm actually, one of my areas of expertise is I'm a cyber specialist. I've done cyber, I've actually developed programs, the group purchase programs we're talking about. I built those about seven years ago with Beasley is one of my main partners and that's who I met with this last week in London. And so being able to know the coverage, so our team is, we are all made, we're all specialists in something. So when I have a property situation or a pollution, environmental or cyber placement, I have the a team of people that only do that all day long. So that I can make sure that when I bring a solution to you, it makes the most sense and will provide the most impact and support. Analytics is another thing, is doing a deep bench approach, is saying, you know, retention, limit options, PML studies for cat exposures. And considering captive approaches, does that make sense for your organization? So it's all encompassing, but I think the big thing here is I understand premiums are important, but it's really looking at the total cost of risk. All right, that was kind of a long answer, but hopefully I got it.
Yeah.
If your expertise is cyber, who is your person that's, we're really talking property, so who is that?
Oh, I do property too, don't get it, don't. But in terms of my property, he was part of the interviews as well and he had another meeting, so we split times, but there's always a representative here. I insure a lot of large, like for example, Lee County Port Authority is not, you know, they're about 600, 700 million in total insured values. And I I'm the one working with them with FEMA and because of Ian and all that, and I do the property, I do, I'm a broker for all lines of coverage, but my little side specialization is cyber. And so Taylor Force is going to be my property specialist. He got, you know, last year he got the breakout awards from the Business Insurance Journal for 40 under 40. The year before that, I got it, so, you know, we're just making sure the people on the team know what they're doing. Not to brag, but hey.
Mark, if you're good, I've got a couple more.
Okay, go ahead.
So to bring it all back home, looking at roughly the the 3.2 million dollar figure, give or take, whatever it ends up being, what what capacity do you think that's for? What kind of limit do you think we can purchase for, what's going to be available in the market for a district of our size?
It depends. Again, I will always just gear back to what your modeling, your modeling is. So use that as a reference point. Um, I I can't tell you what limit structure that's going to be.
If I can, let's say our modeling was 50 million, do you think we could secure 50 million in the the marketplace right now?
So it's going to cost more, I think you'll be able to secure 25. So for example, I'm dealing with the the client right now that has 25, has 50. AIG on a domestic paper was able to limit it down to 25 million. So I'm having to fill out that 25X of 25 and I've already had syndicates indicate that they're going to do it and it's going to, but it's going to be more expensive.
And and what kind of terms and conditions are?
It's follow-up form.
On the deductible side, for example, the retention side, what are you looking at on a wind deductible or a retention?
That's a great question. So because of post and pre Ian, we were talking about, you know, there's accounts that were 3%. It's percent deductible, 3% to 5%, my particular client has a 5%. Now we're looking at, they're keeping, they're keeping the 5%, they're not moving that, we're not, we're not touching that. But there's accounts that I've heard, not my personal accounts, but I've seen that are being pushed to a 10%, even a potential 10%. But I'm not seeing as much of a push on the retention structure with, when I spoke to London, didn't seem like as long as it's, you know, between 3 to 5%, probably 5%. They're comfortable with that, it's more about the capacity and the cost.
You're still seeing that high?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And is there a minimum on that wind deductible, like 3% subject to 100? Because right now we've got a 2% subject to a 35 through the pool.
Yeah.
So it's just trying to to look at those options and what's available there and then what about?
That's why it's really, it'd be a student of you to pick one broker to canvas the market versus compartmentalizing it. Because I know some some organizations do kind of like a race to the market approach or an assigned marketing, that gets messy in this property market, you want one broker to do it. And they'll go out to the marketplace and see what's available out there.
What about all the apparel deductible, what do you think is a minimum there for?
Um, that one depends on the size of your organization. That I don't see as much of an issue.
But it's probably still somewhere in the 100 to 50?
I've seen 50,000, 100,000, some organizations have taken high, much higher than that, depending on kind of skin in the game that they want. And again, it's all about loss history and see what.
Well, just trying to compare two more, so for the board, just the pooled approach versus the other approach, because I think we're at 25 all the perils and then 35 wind at the 2%. So just trying to to put all that out there.
I would, because of this, it's going to be comparing apples with oranges, unfortunately, because you're coming from a pooled structure.
I appreciate it.
But another thing I didn't think about, I think I have thought about it, but I didn't mention it, is also doing an approach where you have certain markets doing the primary and then having a pool set access of it. So that's something that we're talking about even within my own client. My own clients are saying if like the pool can take on that extra layer of risk, it's going to be a shared limit among the membership, but. So I'm kind of like hybrid, you gotta be innovative.
Yeah. Excellent. Got all the questions answered?
I think so.
All right, excellent. Well, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
I believe next would be Gallagher, is there a representative? Ah, there you are. If you would also begin by introducing yourselves, please.
Absolutely happy to. Good afternoon, Board, Chris Connolly with Arthur J. Gallagher, so Senior Vice President with Gallagher, been here the last 17 years. And, um, yeah, excited to answer any questions you might have. I didn't prepare anything, so we'll just be here for Q and A.
Excellent.
With me is Erica, oh, I'm sorry, out of the Orlando office as well.
I'm Erica Conick with Gallagher, also an area Senior Vice President, been with Gallagher 12 years and I am a Tavarys resident.
Okay, all right. You had far to drive, didn't you? Excellent.
I'm going to have a lot of similar ones, it's not going to deviate too much, it'll be some less after we get that out, but I don't know if anybody else had anything first.
Anybody feel like they want to show off after listening to Tyler and take the first stab at? All right, Tyler, kick us off again, please.
I'll say, well, we we thank Felipe for taking it the first round of questions. In his defense, we at least could prepare a little bit, so.
This really shows the value of a diverse board, right? I mean, this is, this is why this board is is strong, it's the diversity of backgrounds and strength, so I'm appreciative. Start us off, please.
I think similar, just getting to the, I guess, starting at the the top number and then going from there. Do you agree on a 20 to 30% indication regardless of the the creative design going about there, if that is a coherent question?
Yeah, so we're happy to answer that question. I think, um, unfortunately, none of us can, none of the brokers in front of you can control the market, but what we can do is just be upfront and, you know, be honest as far as what we're seeing. So, um, we've, both Eric and myself, we've got a broader team, about 40 people throughout the state of Florida that focus on nothing but public sector risk. And so what we've seen thus far is, I just jotted this down from an email, but, um, so everything we've seen thus far for 3-1 and 4-1 renewals is the lowest up 27% and the highest up 86%. So the reality is we've got tons of pressure coming at us. Um, as brokers, we have to think creatively or creatively around how do we structure programs to make sure that we're, you know, we're doing the best we can in an extremely challenging market. But with that, even with those percentages, a lot of those same clients are cutting limits by, on average, 25 million in their excess power. So there's a lot of pain, there's a lot of disruption in the market. And lucky for us, I mean, we've lived through Hurricane Katrina and the 04, 05 storms, we, you know, we have some strategies on how to mitigate that, but none of us can get away from that pressure. So we're seeing that in addition to, um, I know Felipe talked about deductibles or is there a question about deductibles? We're also seeing mandated 5% deductibles across the state, so it is a really challenging environment. Now, that said, just to kind of wrap that up, that said, this typically these peaks only last about 12 to 18 months. So with any hope, you know, we can get back to a normal position in the market where, you know, we can actually place programs and get capacity like we historically have. But this is, there's no question 2023 is going to be a challenging year.
Agreed. Um, so kind of on that same line of thinking, again, very good presentation, a lot of good information in here. Um, and I know it gets to a point where it's, it's really putting information together and then it's just a matter of how it translates to the individual account. But like, for example, when you're going over your references, great references, um, and mentioned that the uncertainty for 2023 and the the challenges in the marketplace. And then we mentioned two examples of two clients in 2021 where you were able to get some pretty significant rate decreases in a different market, but still, that was achieved. What did those two accounts, if this is, if you have it, what did 2022 look like, what did 20, and what do you expect 2023 to look like to the best, or let's start with 2022? What did 2022 look like for either one of those?
Yes, so so, um, in terms of the specific accounts, or do you mean just the market dynamic?
So just for example, you got a, like a 7% rate decrease year one in a different market, but then 2022, was there a push for exposure increases in appraisal? So did you get rate and exposure to get it back up to what the market's asking for or?
Yeah, so, um, so one of those examples was another school district that we were, we were new as a broker. And I think the main difference is it was a difference in approach, so you may have seen in our presentation that the way that we go about designing programs and negotiating programs is we, you know, we generally generally go direct to certain markets. We use wholesale brokers where it's necessary and beneficial, and then we use separate access point for going into international markets. So that creates a dynamic of you've got basically a kind of a three-legged stool where you're constantly having this competition into the program. So that was, and prior to us taking over, it was 100% turned over to a wholesale broker. So I think that was one of the big areas of cost savings was the ability to access markets direct. And then that additional capacity or different additional competition that we brought in. So that was, that was part of it. Second was, we found and actually the client, I don't think knew at this time, there was a lot of additional compensation for not the retail brokers, not the folks like us that are sitting up in front of the podium here, but some of the ancillary brokers, other intermediaries that got brought in. So we're able to control that compensation and actually cap it on a global basis. So that was another component of the, you know, the overall cost savings. Now, the difference 2022 to this year is capacity. So that's the big challenge this year is just going to be building a program, if you choose to go to standalone approach, would be just building the necessary limits that you would want. And that's, again, I think that's more of a short-term issue that we have right now off the back of, you know, Ian and some other challenges the industry is facing. But, um, but I think in time that will flush itself out.
So trying to be fair, it's going to come up, so I think it'd probably be best to bring it up now, James, if you want to, on the the Osceola thing.
Yeah, it was brought up in some of the the comments, um, I guess from staff about the, I guess, at the time, it might have been pending litigation with Osceola County School Board and Gallagher. I pulled the the docket from federal court, looks like it's been settled. Um, do you guys want to comment on that at all or are you able to?
Probably not able to comment on that, but but my understanding is it has been settled, it also was not, had nothing to do with our division. Greater broader Gallagher Company. But I probably, the attorneys will smack me, I'm sure if I said anything else, so hopefully you can appreciate, probably to leave it there.
You guys have any follow-up questions regarding that?
I mean, not really, I mean, I I certainly understand the the EB side versus the property and casualty side and how those are different silos, but just when it's under the same Gallagher name and everything else, just the the perception out there, not trying to cast any doubt on you guys or anything else. I thought it was fair enough just to bring it up now and not bring it up later.
Yeah, appreciate you.
Kind of more on the, one of the big things was controlling the placement commissions, um, global broker food chains typically make up 15, 20%. Um, and you guys think you can make an immediate impact there and be more transparent in all caps with how, um, how the district pays for these costs. So I mean, is it fair to say that the the total percentage would be in the the 10 range for all, for all the retail side and the excess placement side? If it's 15 to 20 is the the food chain and you can make an immediate impact, what what do you see percentage-wise?
Yeah, I mean, it's a good question. I think at the end of the day, it's negotiable and the biggest thing from our side is that we would be completely transparent on that. So I think there's a, there's definitely a balancing act of if you, you as a client, if you reduce that compensation too much, then it's hard to get the attention of all of the service providers, not just ourselves to, you know, that back the program. So, um, so at the end of the day, we're negotiable on that, our trading partners are as well. We've, I know there's a comment about owned wholesalers, so we're we're advocating using a non-owned wholesaler, Amwins has no affiliation with Gallagher in the placement. So, um, but we're flexible to those ideas and we could certainly, you know, we we would, are able to institute some forms of cap with exactly that number as we'd be flexible to negotiate.
Okay. Excuse me, I'm sorry, the cap is 50, is right now, it's 50 in your presentation?
On a flat fee basis for the retail, so kind of our component of that, I think his question, if I heard you right, was just in terms of the overall placement. So certain pockets could be placed with a wholesale broker, certain insurance policies, which is another intermediary. And there may be a, if you have to access the international markets, you would need an intermediary for that. So I think his question was, would we be flexible to cap all of that and the answer is yes. What exactly that number is, you know, is up for negotiation for us.
So for, would you, would you say that your $50,000 retail commission is the same as what Alian is saying in the 225 retail all-in number?
That's the.
That was the whole placement, everything else, the 50,000 just the retail side and the the commission that may be earned on the the other side for placing the excess and reinsurance and all that fun stuff.
In fairness, we haven't looked at any of the competitor proposals, so I'm not sure, you know, comparing apples or oranges or or what. That would be the 50,000 for the retail side, we also, so certain clients want us to cap the entire placement and we were willing to do that too.
And that's kind of what I, what I'd like to consider or see how that conversation is had down the road or whenever that happens. But from how I understood Alian, it was the 225 pretty much capped all in for all services offered. Does that seem a number that you guys would be in the same ballpark as, more or less?
Yeah, I think at the end of the day, probably, you know, we all have similar costs internally, so I mean, I don't think it's any surprise we'd be in a similar range. But two of our school districts we work with now do an all-in fee, so including the entire global placement and we're willing to do that for you all as well.
And then you're our current agent on the casualty side, correct?
We are, yes.
Your office, so yeah. So especially too, if we could, just as an option on the table, have it all in one place and simplify it all out, if that would create any more savings across the board, just having teams work on.
Absolutely, yeah.
Across it, if that 225 could be even less as an all-in number, I I would certainly be interested in in what that would shake out to be.
And one, um, so I don't know, we've probably mentioned this or in passing, we might have alluded to this, but at the end of the day, we don't have any skin in the game or whether it's conflict of interest or perceived conflict across any of the pools. So the pools that we represent, um, and Erica represents some other school pools, they, you basically wouldn't be really eligible for that, their programs. So from our standpoint, we look at it as that we'd be completely unbiased. So as of 7-1 this year, we know the market that we're going to be in, does it make sense to stay in the Pidget program for an extra year? It might, you know, we're, we'd be completely flexible to whatever makes the most sense for the district. So that doesn't have to be a standalone program, clearly we could place that if that's the desire of the board and of, um, you know, the risk management team. But at the end of the day, whether it was Pidget or FISB or you named the pool, the potential provider, we're able to consult for them, for you guys and make sure that, um, that at the end of the day, you're picking the right path that you think is, you know, is worthwhile for the district.
Cool, I appreciate that. Kind of going down that path more so still on the the individual placement side. So I know that the number is hard to say, it's it's just the market, so I'm not going to ask you those questions, but just more along the deductible retention sides, you're seeing what, like a 5% minimum wind? And then all of the perils being somewhere, whatever it might be.
There's no question, this is a, and I hate to say this, it's probably not, we aren't salespeople at the end of the day, this is just the reality. It's a terrible time to place a new program in Florida, it just is. So all of the new capacity in the state of Florida is for a large entity like yourselves and our other public entity clients is coming at a 5% deductible with wind, probably a minimum of 100,000 at least, maybe 250. And then the, which historically, so we insure Marion schools and, you know, others in central Florida, historically you could get a 2 or 3% deductible done. And I think long-term, that's probably where central Florida lands, but this year going into the market new would be very tough to get anything other than 5%.
I appreciate that candidness. Um, the appraisal side, they're about a year old, you think those are good for a couple of years even in the market?
Absolutely, with the trend, yeah, as long as you trend it, knowing that 2022, there's been some uplift in the cost per square foot.
What do you see in benchmarking wise roughly central Florida on cost per square foot right now?
Or, well, we actually have that internally. Or, well, we actually have that internally. So we've kept track, because of the pressure on, from markets, we've kept track of every school district that we insure in the state, which is, including the pools, represents about half. And on the high end, it's about 250 some, some markets think it should be 275 for the record. And then on the lower end, you're probably...
We have some that are 145, but they're too, that's too low and frowned upon. It has to be above 200.
I think that's about where we were pre-apraisals and pre-getting the exposures up to date. And I think now, after the latest ones, we're about 185 a foot in the pool. So do you think that number would be good right now in the, in the open market? You think it'd go to a minimum of 2? Do you think it'd go to a minimum of 225?
So I, it's less the sense that it would be a minimum, it's more how much, do carriers believe that number? And they all have their own tools that they've come up with that assess what they think the cost per square is. There is actually a report that the state of Florida, the DOE does, and I think their average cost per square that they came up with on new school construction throughout the state was like 250, 240, something like that.
There were some on there that were above 300, even on that 2020.
Which, which in that report too, might include site work and things that aren't insurable, so.
Coastal properties versus inland and everything else.
But to answer your question directly, I think that probably looks light in terms of the benchmarking. But it's a, you know, I think it's an evolution to get to the proper valuation. And it is, it is sort of, it's an educated guess. Valuation, you never know until a building burns down, unfortunately. But, so yeah, I think that's probably a little light in terms of our, your benchmarking.
So even if we're looking at, let's say, $200 a foot, that's another 10%ish increase in exposure. And then if we're looking at 20 to 30 on rate, just whatever can happen. I know I'm not holding you guys to those numbers, just how, how crazy the market is right now. I mean, we're looking at another potentially 30, 40%.
It's a substantial number, which is why, you know, when you see, we're talking about some of these renewals that have, that have been presented, most clients are choosing to take some additional risk, whether that's deductible, whether that's on the top end of programs, just because, to try to mitigate some of that pressure. But you're absolutely right, is the markets are asking for substantially increased valuation and at the same time, asking for substantially increased rates. So that all, you know, that comes to real costs for you all and completely appreciate the, you know, the money tree does not come for school districts. So I appreciate there's a lot of other places you'd rather spend money than on insurance.
Thank you.
That's what I've got.
Yeah, all right, go ahead.
Can you talk a little bit about your internal reinsurance program? What would that look like for us when it was time to renew?
In terms of, so how we would bring in reinsurance potentially to support the district?
Right, and how, how is the fact that you have, that you conduct that internally, how would that be an advantage for us?
So it'd be an advantage in the sense that we're all, so we talked about the, the difference in access points. So having that, that sort of three pronged stool, so you've got a lot of internal competition. The other side of that is there's what's called facultative reinsurance, that we have a different group, not ourselves, but, but a different working group within Gallagher that focuses in that area. And so what they can do is expand the access, so additional resources, additional insurance companies, reinsurance companies, that could be brought in to build if you wanted a $50 million limit or whatever that number is. It just give, it's another pool of capital of availability of limit that we can bring to you as a client. So that, that's ultimately the value, is it's just, it's making sure in such a difficult market that there's no stone left unturned. So we've been everywhere, we've accessed all pools of capital, and at the end of the day, we'll, you know, we'd come together.
You're getting the best deal for us.
Precisely. You said that in a much better way than I did. I'm just down the insurance rabbit hole, so I apologize for that.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions? All right, we appreciate you very much, thank you.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
And I think our third presentation today belongs to Lassiter Ware. Let's see, a couple, a couple representatives coming forward. If you would also begin by introducing yourselves and then we'll provide opportunities for the board to ask some questions.
Hello, hello, this is Tru Community Service, listening to insurance presentations on Monday. But my name is Doug Childers, I'm the president and CEO of Lassiter Ware. Lassiter Ware has been in Lake County, headquartered in Lake County for 110 years, 110 plus years. We have 110 employees, six locations across the state, 32 employees pay taxes here in Lake County.
Davis Talmage, I'm the risk advisor, I am a Lake County native, I have a Leesburg office. So we got three of us in here for sure. Right.
Excellent, thank you very much. Tyler?
It's going to be a much shorter list, so we've already done it twice. Just a matter of what are you seeing in the market?
Yeah, it's brutal, it's, it's like, I totally agree with some of the comments that have been said before. I think it's 30%, maybe more. I do also agree with the notion that going with a pool right now does not make a lot of sense for an organization in the middle of the state. Why do you want to partner up with coastal organizations that are about to really feel the pain of what's happened the last couple of years? I think a standalone, if possible, would be the way to go. That's my opinion. And I don't know that you would have to, you could probably look at a pool and a standalone and, you know, compare the side by side.
Do you think we have enough capacity to do that, to get a, I just think that's the biggest hurdle right now is getting enough carriers on the paper to, to fill out those limits on both sides.
I think it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge. But I think your, your location in the middle of the state, if anybody can do it with your, you know, your volume certainly helps.
Cool. Going down, what, one thing that I, that I read in, in your information that I thought was pretty interesting and I agree with it to a, to a pretty strong degree, the value of analytics and modeling and what that really means in the, in the marketplace, right? Not just the marketplace now, but property in general. And kind of where is, is the juice worth the squeeze in your opinion? And what, what's the, how, how much worth, how much is worth investing in that kind of stuff? And what do you see on the other end?
Right, so, you know, it's, what was Dale saying is everything's good and everybody has a plan until you get punched in the mouth. And that's what's been happening with our modeling systems in the, and Josh was here, Josh was, made a presentation to staff, and we talked about the different modelings that we're using. But even those, they're, they're a little bit sporadic at this juncture. Everybody's trying to really calculate what the inflation and the cost of building and the cost of the contractors hiring employees to make these repairs. You know, it's just exponentially adding up. So that's why I think, I think a 20% is probably very conservative when you talk about an increase, but when you talk about your exposure increase and all these other inflationary factors, I bet it's closer to 30, 40.
Total, so like 20 on the rate, 20 on the exposure, something around there, yeah. I would agree. On, on your fee proposal, that I think it was what, like 125, 125? And is that just the retail side, or is that?
Was it for us?
So that'd be the total, 125 all in, any excess would be net of commission? All that was just, that's, that's the total number for?
Yeah, for Lassiter Ware, yes.
All right. That all I've got there.
All right, excellent, thank you. Anything from you, Bill?
I'm good at this presentation.
Okay, Stephanie?
Can you just clarify, you said, you said 125 minimum is the retail for Lassiter and Ware, but what about for anybody else that comes in?
100 to 125, I think was the range, is that right?
Even anybody else that comes in, that's what we're saying, that's, that's the cap.
So when, when we take it to, we've worked with World Risk Management, you know, to help us place the business. And when a company places, there'll be reinsurance and there may be additional fees there, but we'll make you completely aware of all of those. And regardless of what program you use, there usually is, I mean, there's commissions that's involved as you go up the ladder. Insurance companies buy insurance and those reinsurance intermediaries also buy insurance. So they don't, you know, do that without a fee.
It's just substantially lower, that's all, that's what I was like. How are you able to do that?
Our fee is substantially lower, according to the...
Well, I'm, I'm looking at one in particular.
Yeah.
But they said all, is that the difference? That they said everything, even the outside? And you guys are just saying for the cost of insurance, there could be potentially more, am I misunderstanding that?
I think, I mean, we are, we will not make more than 125.
Right.
Now, others, like he's saying, could, but we're not.
Got it.
But World Risk Management and the others would or could collect additional on top of the 125. The 125 would just be the, the Lassiter Ware piece.
Right, thank you, that's what I was trying to clarify.
Yes, 100 to 125, and you put a range?
Yes, it's a range, yes, it's a range. I don't mean to keep saying 100 to 125, it's a range. Thank you.
Excellent, good clarification. All right, I had neither. Excellent, that was easy, guys, appreciate it, thank you. All right, so from this point, you, you've kind of restricted the amount of, level of, or depth of discussion that we can have in terms of providing some guidance. But so how do we do that within your parameters?
You can't, well, I would say you can give the superintendent additional instructions in terms of go look at, at X, Y, or Z. Follow up questions from the applicants, you know, can they answer this or that? As long as questions to all of them, things like that. But then if you have any, any guidance, I guess, as far as what is important or what you want to have analyzed in, in further detail by staff prior to taking this to a board meeting for action.
Okay, and, and are we the ones who are going to be deciding on this, or is it going to come in form of a superintendent?
The recommendation will come from the superintendent, but you guys will, will, you know, go again, yeah.
All right, very good.
I had a clarifying question, I forgot it, because I was trying to listen to Mr. Myers, hold on. Somebody else go, because I had a really important clarifying question, I didn't write it down though.
I guess after, and there's nothing more boring than listening to insurance presentations. And I will assure you that, that, thanks for the committee being here again to hear it again, and, and for the time that you guys took. I want to mention a couple of concerns, first of all, right off the bat. And, and I have a lawsuit that was on Gallagher, and it happened to be on their major medical, but it's still part of Gallagher, still the entity. And it had to do with the transparency on fees. So that is very problematic for me personally. I do want to read one statement though, in the, that has nothing to do with the lawsuit, that their very introduction is that they're a school district comprising 53 schools, educating 70,000 students. The district ranked 67th out of 67 counties in the amount of administrative costs per student. So I found that interesting, that they led out with how the equity and funding formula doesn't work. That's my point, just to get that in and move you on. So, so on, on just the...
We wouldn't expect anything else from you.
Right, 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 right.
So just based on that lack of transparency, and I don't care if, if a person works for Bill Mathias, Mathias Food Service, no matter what, it's Bill Mathias. I can't say that it was him or her or whoever. This is still one company and leadership of fish smells from the head down. And so Gallagher is not a consideration for me, period. To Alliance, I was very impressed with the Alliance. I do have one question, a qualifying question, to the fee. It is, based on what Mrs. Luke said, it is all in, including the 225, including what other brokers?
It is including all services. The only time there would be an external cost would be recruiting Amwins or Howden, and that's their London commission. I can't control that as a broker, I have nothing to do with it. Alliance will not be collecting any additional revenue other than the $225,000 fee. It's always been that way, that's just the role of this.
Okay, thank you. A great presentation, by the way. You just went to number two with me. Anyway, let me speak to, from my heart, of where I'm coming from. And, and in the first two presentations that Alliance made and Gallagher made in person, the Gallagher folks weren't here because they were at Lloyds of London with clients. And you, you take people to Lloyds of London for their relationship building. That was problematic for me. In the third, in the third presentation, which was Lassiter and Ware, they bring Lloyds to us. They bring them to see our facilities. If you take a crew, go into Lloyds of London, all expense paid, and, and is it relationship building? I don't think so. I think it's buying the business, that's my opinion.
If we could get your, on, on microphone there to...
Sorry about that.
No, that's all right.
Wanted to make sure to clarify that one, because that's a big one. We, again, take every situation differently. This was actually the first time I've taken a client to London, it's on their expense, not my expense. I can't, on the, on the client, it was Lafayette paying for that, I can't pay for that, I'm not paying for them to go to London. We are their broker, we were there to set up several meetings because it makes more sense. We actually do have a symposium that we do every year, and we did it just this last fall, where we have different, 50 different carriers come to one common place and host those meetings with their clients. So we do do multiple avenues. This particular situation was just an expense paid from, that came from Lafayette schools. That made sense because they analyzed that and they needed to do it in a quick manner. That was not on us, we didn't, we don't pay for that. Sorry, I just wanted to make it clear on record, we do not pay for them to go. Snoozing, that's not, no, we're, we're not those people.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Then we, then, then Lassiter and Ware, and Lassiter and Ware, as y'all saw, was the lowest score. Part of the criteria was the fact that they are not immersed in this field. So this is relatively new to them. But how do you become a contender if you're never allowed to be, to be a player? That is, that's where my heart is. The fact that they are based in Leesburg, the fact they have 30 employees that live here, and when it comes to insurance, for me personally, it is who do you trust? Because we're all buying a pig and a poke to, to some degree, is how do they respond when there's a crisis? And I will tell you in the past with Brown and Brown, Lake Minnauld High School when it burnt down, Scott Hyman was on the scenes within hours. And that means a lot to me. They're not a contender anymore, so we won't consider that. But I know that, that the team that is going to be taking care of Lake County Schools, that they're right here. So if we need them, they're available. And we're giving them the opportunity as well as us, the trust that they're going to take care of it. And I know their integrity, and that I believe in, that they will place us. I've met the people they're working with and, and just got a really warm feeling when it, when, not a warm feeling, actually, I trust, a trust feeling. When we had the first discussion of the rates going up, it is Davis Talmage back there that I reached out to, because he handles my business insurance. And I asked him, does this 25% make sense? He says, let me get engaged, he met with Scott. He's the one that suggested that based on where we are with his team, that we move away from the pool, that it's better for a standalone with the amount of the, the $1.3 billion. There was also strategic conversation of how do you, with a linear, with the linear size of our county and that the risk associated in different areas, different age schools, those are things they came forward with without any prompting and started this whole process. So, so for me, I want to stay local, it's, it's not something new to any of y'all on this board. But it also has to do with integrity and with capacity, and I think they have both. So that's me.
All right, excellent, thank you.
I remembered my question, can I ask my question?
Oh, Stephanie, yes, please, go ahead.
And it may be, it may be a stupid question, so I'm just going to tell you guys out front that I don't understand that necessarily, when the comment was made by somebody, I wrote it down, if I need to quote whoever said it, but they said bringing it into, bringing our insurance into a new market is what's going to make the rate increase. So obviously, we had huge storms and the rates are increasing. Is there savings to staying with the company we're with now? Why are we moving? Or is a new market just every year you're renegotiating?
Do you like to answer that one?
I will tell you through the presentation process that Brown and Brown, as all others, talked about how hard the market was and they were expecting some increases. So, you know, either they're going to have to lower how much they cover, which increases your risk, or they're going to have, or they're going to have to charge more. So we are with Pidget, and Pidget is, is through Brown and Brown now, so they're saying the same thing. So if we stay, we still could see, we don't know what that is yet, but we're, we should see some increase.
Does it make sense that...
Well, Pidget is the group, and Pidget was hit really hard in South Florida, correct?
Okay, is that what we're moving? That's why I'm asking.
Because in a group, you're sharing just exposure.
Right, that's why, that honestly, that helps answer my question, I was thinking, why are we moving now? Like, if we know this is happening and now all these insurance companies are being hit, then what is the, what?
I thought that was a good question.
Yeah, the, the main reason is this conflict of interest with, with Mr. Brandenburg, being a Brown and Brown employee, as to why, we can't continue with Brown and Brown, that's, that's the main reason. In terms of what, what pool we end up in, that's, that's a whole other situation, whether that would happen, have to happen or not.
Okay.
But that was the reason why with Brown and Brown, we threw it too, so just to put it out there.
Mr. Myers, I asked you a question earlier today regarding one of the team members for Lassiter and Ware. There was some kind of legal item, do you remember?
That was Gallagher.
It's Gallagher.
Where, that was settled in 2022?
Was it Gallagher? I thought it was...
You did mention...
Yeah, it was Lassiter and Ware.
It's one of the people that you have proposed to be on our team, there was a problem.
You said there was an issue with licensing.
But I sent you the text.
Yeah, you said there was an issue with licensing.
Yeah, do you know what I'm talking about? I think her...
Was it in, part of the comments?
Let me look at their team members, I can tell you which one it was. It's a lady, a female, Ice Linger.
Come up front to the mic.
It's Barbara I-N-S-I-N-G-E-R. And it says it was settled. I don't know if you're free to speak to it.
That is, that is news. I mean, Barbara is a teammate. She would be a customer service rep for Davis, but I am not aware of that information.
Okay.
That's completely...
It was in our, we got a lot of stuff up here, but it was in one of those things.
Yeah.
And when I read it, I sent it to Mr. Myers just to ask if, you know, it was significant enough. But it says it's been settled.
Yeah.
I just wondered.
The only thing I can think of, there was a book transaction that there was outstanding litigation on, which is, you know, that was settled in two thousand and twenty-two.
But her license wasn't in any way, any kind of restrictions or anything placed on it?
No.
Okay.
Not to my knowledge, but we'll be checking very quickly. If we get to the office.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else have more comments for the superintendent's guidance here?
Yeah, I've just got a couple closing ones. Kind of, it's not even playing devil's advocate, but I respectfully disagree with a lot of what Mr. Mathias said on, on this one in the order of looking at these brokers. I do think experience in this industry matters, especially right now, in looking at the options. I'm looking at how the, the committee evaluated these, these respondents. I just think it's also worth considering the overall value, what we're paying versus the fee, and really what we're getting for it. So if we're paying a little bit more to be with another respondent, whoever that might be, it, it might be worth it in the long run. So I just, I, I don't want us to get in the mindset of, of always local and always the, the lowest bidder necessarily with items like this. So I just want to put that on the record.
Point, counterpoint.
And, yeah, I...
They aren't the lowest. As it so happened, Gallagher came in the lowest, but as we've seen from the lawsuits, that they make up their difference on the backside. It's, it is, excuse me?
Wait, what do you mean when you say they came in the lowest? In your internal rankings?
They came in at fifty thousand dollars.
I'm sorry?
It was a fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, the cost, okay.
Plus commissions.
Oh, right, right, right.
Plus commissions.
Yeah, I was...
But initially, it was, I was led to believe that was fifty thousand all-in, and everyone was questioning, how could you do it for fifty, right?
That's right.
And so it's not fifty. The two hundred sounds more realistic as a high-end number, and the number that Lassiter and Ware came in at the one twenty-five seems to be...
But that was still the, the idea that that's, that's Lassiter and Ware's fee, which is not, it's a good fee, but it's still that there's the, the commission that's made up on the back end as well, just like the others. So, I mean, it just...
But, but all that aside, without getting into the revised markets, but, but I just want to, want to say this, that when you insure a school district, it's a series of buildings. That's all that it is. And that the experience level that Lassiter and Ware has commercially with buildings has been, has been stated in their resume, but we didn't give it any credit. So if you, you know what I'm saying, that...
I agree.
Do we, do we not think that they can handle?
No, I'm not saying that at all. I think they're a great firm and they're mighty capable. It's just a matter of when you've got a one point three billion dollar schedule and growing, some expertise in, in schedules of that size is important for us to consider. That's the only point I'm making. No disparagement against Lassiter and Ware whatsoever.
Well, they're not disparaging. I understood.
Yeah, but it just, I, I think that, that experience, it matters, in my opinion, when we're looking at making a decision like this.
One thing that, that matters to me, I know we're in the, trying to provide some guidance here, is, is I really value the staff input and the committee that has, has sat through the, the full presentations of all these. Certainly, most of us here have not had that, that benefit of, of that full thing. And I know staff brings a lot of expertise in a variety of fields, and so I, I really value that expertise. And so as I look at these, these composite scores for the various brokerages, I, I guess I'm looking for the ones that scored at the top, based on the committee and those recommendations.
I didn't think we were supposed to be polling. That's why I'm not saying anything.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how this structure works because superintendent, how is she going to get a, how is she going to corner a recommendation?
These are like new, new parameters for us on workshop discussions.
Steve might be rolling over somewhere right now.
Well, Steve, we could have just said everything.
Do you think you have enough to go on? Or do you have any good questions?
So from this point, we, we can engage privately with, or one-on-one with the superintendent?
You can always engage one-on-one, yes.
Okay. All right.
At least, do you have any questions as far as direction that you want from the board?
Are there any other questions or things you'd like for us to go back to those that presented today to get more clarification? Certainly, I'll be sitting down with staff again, going through their information and adding any new details based on today's presentation.
I do have a follow-up question, and it might be for, for you two gentlemen, is how important is that FEMA component? Because I know that's been something we've heard repeatedly. I saw it mentioned in some, not in others, I just, how important? And maybe that'd be a point of clarification for the companies as well. It's like, what is the, you tell me if that's important.
Whenever an event like that does happen, it does help to have someone to assist the district because we're not full-time FEMA people here at the district. And their expertise, the people who do this consistently, their expertise is valuable, very valuable. The, the tying that in with your insurance company at the same time, sometimes they still, they're talking the same language, and here's coverage here, and here's coverage that belongs FEMA side, this was covered by insurance. So it's kind of good to have them in the room and being a part of that. So I could see value to that, too. So I think that component does bring value to this, this proposal.
All right. Excellent. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
I think that was one of the most unique experiences I think we've, we've had in looking at a topic. Great depth. Thank you.
It's a good word.
I think we've got just over forty-five minutes before our six o'clock general meeting.
I think we have another...
Yes, yes. And I'm asking if there's time to do it. Yes? Are we good?
Oh, absolutely, there.
Hot dog. All right, all right. Dwayne, come on down. Are you bringing David with you? Excellent.
I did. Weaned up. So I've decided that if I ever wanted to end the Super Bowl party, I'm going to bring a bunch of insurance salesmen. No offense. This will hopefully be equally exciting. We've got a little bit of technical setup here, but what I'm going to do is, I'm going to talk a little bit about a rule change that recently happened. And this is around student privacy and their data. Obviously, one of the things that is interesting is our, as kind of sort of technology has evolved, is it used to be that anything that housed student data would actually literally be installed on one of our servers and would never leave our network. And probably about ten years ago, you started to see this slide towards web-based applications to where basically everything used to live here and now nothing lives here. And one of the things that I think is super important for us is that to understand, it has obviously always been our goal to make sure that we protect student data. And a lot of times, whenever you see an item that has been presented to you for purchase by the district, we've already gone to legal counsel to look at the data sharing agreement, to go ahead and take care of all that. However, there's a lot of frontier there, the things that may happen in the classroom that aren't necessarily completely involved. So to give you a little bit of background on it real fast is, is that on September twenty-sixth, the State Board of Education passed a new rule. Now, traditionally, what we see is we see legislation about this time of the year start to build, and then it hits us in the summer, and then technical guidance comes sometime after. This kind of came through a different way, and it's honestly, it's kind of got a feel of legislation, almost a mandate, but by coming through the Board of Education rule, it, it sneaks up on you a little bit differently. It's not one of the traditional conduits you see these type of rules come through. One thing that was also interesting, just as a note, is, is that between September twenty-sixth, we had two hurricanes, Thanksgiving holiday and a Christmas holiday. So the implementation turnaround time in this has been relatively short for districts. And basically, I'm going to kind of give you a little bit of a rundown of what it basic, what it means. And so one of the concerns is, and I don't think politically anybody can argue against this, is that parents have voiced concerns to the state about if something is required for classroom instruction and it takes my student's data and then does things like shares that data for who knows what purpose particularly, then that is legitimately a concern. Now, again, most district-purchased applications, iReady's making plenty of money, they're not selling the data. Like, that's not something they're doing. Google, a lot of those contracts have been kind of sort of beat up by every school district in the country, and so they're there. What was interesting about this is this includes free or paid applications. And that note of the free application is one of the areas where we may be a little bit more vulnerable. If you've been a teacher or you've been in a classroom recently, one of the things that's neat is you may find it, and they're viral to some extent, like one teacher finds it and then another teacher gets interested in it and says this application is good. And then a lot of the way you kick these things off is, is that you may just put a code up on a board. The teachers basically get the kids to put the code in, and then all of a sudden, they're signing in. The application may ask them a couple of sort of innocent questions to some extent, name, grade, teacher name, whatever. But that starts to become, and starts to go down the rabbit hole of personally identifiable information that is now being stored. And there's never been like, in that particular case, when school districts have dealt with this, and I think this is a very common school district issue, is that, well, you see those terms and conditions, but somebody's just hitting accept, accept, accept to get to the good stuff, right, in the very beginning. And so this rule basically slowed everybody down and said, whether it's free or paid, you have to take that into consideration. More importantly, there has to be a parent opt-out of the data sharing. The parent opt-out, we'll talk about in a little bit, is a little different than the kid not using the application. We'll talk about the difference. But this rule, when it came down, like I said, it did not come with a ton of technical guidance. I will say this, is that, I don't know if it's just chief information officers or chief technical officers across the state, immediately I saw everybody's email chain, we're on an email chain, it lit up about it. So almost instantly, multiple, every district in Florida was involved, and we've had some very good conversations. And I think the rule is written very plainly to a large extent. So let's talk about what the rule is going to say. And so on the next slide, real fast, what we're going to do is, is we're going to talk a little bit about what are the requirements of the change. And so in a way, we want to make sure that we don't create like this massive bureaucracy, but we also do obviously want to protect student data, and we want to ensure that this satisfies the new, the new rule. And so what the rule said in basically four quick bullet points is, is that districts must create a vetting process for all applications. That means the ones that we may not know about, and I'm going to talk about our strategy to address that. And then, probably more importantly, and probably this is the meat of it, is districts must provide an updated data sharing agreement that accommodates the rule change for all vendors, whether it was present, like we're getting ready to purchase them, so you'll see that rolling forward, or the future. And then also, too, I would add, the past. That becomes kind of the Achilles' heel of implementing something like this, right, is, is that knowing what teachers have, and because we are, I actually do believe this, because we're a technology-rich district, because every kid has access to a Chromebook throughout the day, we've had innovation in the classroom for sure, but as far as cataloging that, that gets to be a little bit tricky, which brings us to kind of another point, is, is that we must actually create a catalog of all applications required for classroom uses. So instead of asking you for five more allocations to handle all that, right, like one of the things that we tried to do is, is that we tried to do something very, very smart, because as you can imagine, knowing what every teacher is signed up for could be a challenge. Some districts have actually done it on the honor system. That's good for them. And so one of the things is, is that, or it's teacher self-report, but they only self-report at the beginning of the year, to be honest with you, and then after that, time goes on and maybe they don't remember and things of that nature. This catalog must be made online and available to parents with details about student privacy. Now, listen, not in the competitive state, and I'm not going to say necessarily that we have a harder challenge than any other things with the books, but this is a big challenge to a large extent, because one of the things, if you actually get into the rule that it states that you must do, is you've got to basically have this catalog, and then right next to the name of the application, you must actually have the terms and conditions, a little bit of what they're doing with the data, so like a data sharing, kind of like rating, if you will. And that has to be maintained for anything that's in there, right? And so I'm not saying that it's worse than the book situation as far as complexity. I am saying it's very complex, right? And then the last part is, is that students must be given the ability to opt out, or barely parents, I guess, for their students, must be given the ability to opt out. And that's not just to use the application, that means the data never gets sent. That's a little bit, as you know, one of the things that we do for district-purchased applications is that we have those wound pretty tight, they're automated for the most part, and that's how it should be. It reduces a ton of work. We've had to learn how to, and we're going to have to, that's going to be an experiment first, how to un-automate, like how to create exceptions for particular students. Because again, it says, not that you can't log in, it says that we cannot send that vendor that data. So obviously, the requirement of the change is pretty, pretty robust. Yes?
Point. On that last point, so if I'm understanding this correct, so the, the student or the parent can opt out, they can still use the application, but the data is just not sent back to...
In most of the cases, not sharing the data will render the application useless. That's usually how it creates, like a user ID and a password and keeps track of your progress. So at that, at that particular point, unfortunately, it will be a situation where they, they won't be able to use the application.
Well, because that follow-up question would have been, why don't we just opt out all students if they can still use the application and we just not have to track their data? But you just answered that question, that it, it won't work that way.
Correct. Yeah, and I think one of the other things that's interesting, too, is, is that we have this type of policy for Google. Some people are concerned, maybe potentially, about what Google does or doesn't do. I will say that generally, just if I'm observing the behavior, people will opt out for a few weeks. And then they kind of opt back in to some extent, because the technology in Google Classroom and everything is such a great resource. So it would be interesting to see what that pattern is. I guess we will find out, right? So real fast, to kind of talk about what we've done so far, as we kind of sort of take this challenge on, we, we phoned some buddies, for lack of a better term. We joined a club that I would have never joined in my real life, but like, it was called the Florida Privacy Alliance. And basically, what it was, is it was about forty districts, it looks like, that had banded together to try to tackle this problem. And the Privacy Alliance has been working with data sharing to begin with, but they saw this rule change and they kind of jumped into Florida pretty hard. I think there's some strength to this because they're looking to come up with a common data sharing agreement. Let me tell you what I think the power of that is going to be. Well, the power of that probably will be is, is that when we go to a vendor, a lot of times, whenever we have it, any data sharing agreement reviewed, they go, okay, yeah, you're Lake Minnauld, but we're X Company and we're pretty big, and maybe we're going to make the change and maybe we're not. Effectively, if we join with these others and have this common data sharing agreement, these companies, when they say no, are almost, and there's some big ones in there, there's the Miami Dades and all the other people you might expect, they're basically saying that they don't want to do business in the state of Florida. And I think Florida's too big of a market to do that, so kind of belonging to this quasi-consortium, And I think Florida's too big of a market to do that. So kind of belonging to this quasi consortium, if you will, I think is valuable. They've also done something which was a great benefit. They got the Florida School Board Attorneys Association, which sounds like another fun group of people, no offense. But the thing I was going to say is that they have actually been working alongside with the privacy agreement, or the Privacy Alliance to carve this agreement. And so what we're seeing is, is we're seeing a heavy dose of legal vetting once, once we get to that final point. And we were, we thought we were going to have it about a week ago. They met, there was an argument about two or three sentences or something like that. However, we are hoping by mid-February, which is almost any day now, that the agreement will drop. We will then, of course, send that to, to James, to Mr. Myers, our legal counsel for vetting. And should it pass without many questions, then we will bring it to you. And it will become the standard data sharing agreement for the district. I actually think this movement is good. It's just coming in kind of a fast part. Something that made me very popular is, is that as we are getting new applications though, and they come all the time and then sometimes they don't come, but they're still here, if you get what I'm saying. Like, and what I mean by that is, is that people are constantly trying to add a new application. We felt like, we knew we had some grandfathering in to do. And even the state said it's not realistic to be like on September 27th that you're in total compliance. But we felt vulnerable if we were allowing new applications in without this data sharing agreement in. And so what we did is we took a bit of a pause to some extent until we get this data sharing agreement and then we can rejoin. We figure a couple of months, really if you look at the stretch of time with all the holidays and stuff like that is relatively minimum. But we have put that moratorium in place. We communicated that three times, all the way down to the teacher level, just because we felt like it was important to know, this does include those free applications as well. And one of the things that you helped us with, that I think will actually be one of the smartest ways that we can do it, is a program known as Catch On. And so probably about three or four board meetings ago, you approved Catch On. And what Catch On does is pretty ingenious. What it does is it installs, is an extension to the Chrome browser. So every Chromebook, it silently installed. And it has a catalog of like 3,000 instructional applications. And what it does is that it basically runs a scan. And so when somebody, and we actually roster it as well too. So we can see which students are accessing certain applications. We can do that through a filter, but this is a lot better because it's just focused on those, those applications. And we can even see classrooms. So we can see, say, hey, second period in this, Mr. Weeks' class is using it and things of that nature. It's not to be Big Brother. It's just that if we're going to know where to send these data sharing agreements, we have to know where they are. And we just didn't feel like the self-reporting, A, we felt like the self-reporting thing was cumbersome on teachers. And anytime you have a process like that, it's just easier if we can run a detect and do it. It's not that we're trying to play judge and jury. It's just a way to keep the system kind of accountable. And so what I can do real fast is, or actually rather David can do real fast, is that I can show you what Catch On does. It is fascinating. Whenever we went into Catch On, one of the things that it very quickly did is, is we did it two days before, two days before Christmas break. And we're like, oh, it won't catch anything. Well, it caught like 800 applications. And so with that said, it very quickly caught. Now, some of these things are very light applications. I mean, they're very barely applications to some extent. But what we do have is, is that we have settled in at about 1,200 applications that are out there. So if you're wondering what it would be like, this particular application, Catch On, what it does is that it keeps track of the applications and it will also create an approval process for us that is all handled online. So instead of having lots of people handle this, it will kind of automate that where teachers can say, hey, look for an application, finds it for you and say, I want to submit this for approval real fast when we get to the vetting process, which I'll talk about in a second. It also maintains the catalog, the front-facing catalog for the parents and takes care of all those privacy agreements, which nobody wants to look up. In fact, if there are changes to privacy agreements, somebody, not me, but somebody else will probably get a listing, like they get emails basically saying that this has updated and stuff like that. They rate it and they make it very, very transparent for the parent to be able to see, okay, what is this doing? I think that transparency won't necessarily increase opt-outs. I think it will reassure parents that we're being vigilant in this process. But I think it was very, very important to note. And if we actually look at the ones, the applications, 1,268 is a big number. That's anything. If we actually look at the ones that could potentially have student logins, not all of them do. We saw about 550 of them, 560. So realistically, there's a lot of data sharing agreements that are going to have to go around if we're going to keep those 568. We're also going to make that available to school leaders so they can take a look at what's being used at the school. I think that's kind of important just to know from an instructional standpoint as opposed to the privacy. But it's going to handle both and we do think it will be a good tool. We do appreciate y'all approving that. Yes, sir.
So then for a light at the end of the tunnel that's hopefully not a train, James and his good friends at the, the Attorneys Association are working on language that will then send all 550 of these things and just say, here's our new policy and we're effectively good?
That would be the hope. I will tell you that one innovation, and we have to sort of decide whether or not, and I think the lawyers are working on this as well too, is could there be a state registry of these agreements, basically being a common Florida one? And then that means that it just has to get approved in Florida. And so we're doing more of a lookup than we are doing anything else. That would be hugely helpful, because if every district's in the same boat, why create 60 some separate processes? But that is still being hammered out and hopefully we'll, we'll be good. All right. So with that said, I could go into more metrics, but I- That's a separate conversation. So what I'd like to do is, is kind of sort of close this out. So I think one of the things that was important for me to do is, is that we watched some districts kind of sort of misfire or be very blunt on the messaging. One of them was funny. They're like, hey, can you use any application? No, you can't. Like that was like the presentation almost. And we felt like that was a bit harsh, to be honest with you. Because it needs a little bit of nuance. But we do think it needs to be clear, because I do think it is very, very important for teachers to understand that we're all held accountable to the standard. And so one of the things that we'll meet on Valentine's Day, not the best present you could ever give anybody, but there will be a student privacy work group that is basically made up of media specialists, tech cons and people from the school levels to kind of sort of help us work through what some of this communication could look like. And then of course, what that process. I think that process is going to be a form. I don't think we have to bring back an imperial software review committee or anything like that. I think it can be a form. I think it can be us getting the data sharing agreement and making sure that's in place. And then potentially looping in any other district stakeholders, like curriculum if they want in or so on that. But for the most part, I think it will be a pretty light process. I don't think it'll be, be huge. But I did want that privacy. I did want to get that, you know, it's very, very easy from the district and even with these state mandates to say thou shalt. And I think they've already had some great ideas in shaping the messaging, shaping the process to where it conforms and fits to what the schools need while satisfying the rule. And then finally, we like the Catch On. So I will just talk about the next steps. So the next steps hopefully will be pretty straightforward. Hopefully we will get this agreement any couple, any day. We've got a draft of the agreement right now. I feel like I might say those two sentences. It's pretty close. And we will bring that to you as soon as that gets there. I did want to take this opportunity to talk to y'all about it, because when it comes, that way we can go ahead and say we talked about it and you can see the agreement, ask questions, clarify them. And then the agreements, we will start to send to all vendors or we will hopefully be able to leverage this Florida catalog of data sharing agreements. And obviously Catch On will keep us honest, meaning that we will be able to identify these targets. So I think the last part will be that we will, and you will see us probably push it out through social media and other messaging. Catch On will be used to generate this list of approved applications once they've gone through this process. I will be obviously educating parents and other stakeholders about where they can find this. And the hope is, is that we start to see that form up, I would say, at the fourth quarter of this year and then probably really enforced for the start of school next year. I know we've had groups of people already asking us how we're going to, the IT auditor general came through. And before this rule even kind of sort of hit us, when they were doing the audit, they're like, so are you keeping it approved? They, they knew, they knew it was coming. And so I think we will probably have a slight finding on that that we will have already solved by the time they issue it, because they've not been super fast. But that said, I guess that's, oh, one other thing too, that vetting process will be communicated and implemented. And that opt-out form that we currently have in the student code of conduct, it's basically just for Google and Google kind of opts you out of a Chromebook and everything else, will be revised. So we will probably be bringing that language to you as well. It will include something on specific applications. And then of course, we will probably have to create a dashboard or we're going to have to create up some kind of way to kill the automation with that. And then obviously, like I said, that communication is going to be pushed out to parents and staff. You'll probably see a pretty steady drumbeat just to make sure that we stay out of trouble. But I do think overall, I think student privacy and student data privacy is very, very important. We were looking at, part of the reason we were able to get Catch On so quick is that we were looking at that anyway before the rule dropped. And so this just kind of sort of said we were heading in the right direction, if, if not sped us up a little.
Two things. Question and a comment. Sorry, but I'll be brief. On the opt-out form thing, so let's say a parent makes the decision to opt out their student. What happens then? I mean, are they effectively opted out of using a Chromebook and using technology and they're going back to?
Well, if they sign the, if they sign the Google one now, currently they do. At any given time, we have 13 to 14 parents. It's, it's a relatively small amount when I run the reports. So like that doesn't usually happen. We will have to create a dashboard. I don't want to jinx it, but like I don't know if it's like our book dashboard where there's relatively limited responses. But they would have to be de-rostered, if that's a word, and basically un-rostered out of the system. And then that data would have to be sent there. One thing that is important that I think is something that we have started pushing a little bit more is that what vendors do with the data after you've unsubscribed is curious to some extent. Some of them are like, well, we'll keep you a copy in case you come back. However, that's not really their data. And so I think what this is doing is, I think this push by the state is realigning our arrangement with the vendors to go, that is our data. You don't, you don't get to hang on to it, if you get what I'm saying. Not that we did before, but there were cases where I've had vendors before go, well, if you leave, you can, no, we need to destroy the data. We need to have some certificate of that.
Last thing I had, sounds like a great thing for a Super Sunday.
Not this week, right?
I've got some questions on this, but if.
I just have one.
Oh, go ahead.
On the things that are already being used by teachers in classrooms, how is that going to work?
So I think that's a great question. So now that we've detected the 500 or some applications that require, or could potentially require a student login, I think one of the things that we're going to have to do is, is that we're going to have to go through. I have kind of an order of operations on this. The first one is, is that once we get the new data sharing agreement, all the ones the district has purchased, which is the main ones, right? Like there's the iReady, the Alex, things that are used for supplement and intervention, we're going to rifle through those fairly fast. So I think some of the biggest ticket stuff that we'll go through, we know that already because we know the agreements. We know it because it's in class length. So to be honest with you, there's analytics in class length. We can pull that list in two seconds. We'll get those. I think most of those companies will jump to it because they will, again, common data sharing agreement. I think it is an interesting question that I'm going to start having conversations with the privacy work group on. Obviously, the state has given us a little bit of time to implement it, but we're implementing it with all due haste, you know, not, not being sloppy, but doing it. I do wonder a little bit about a grand reset and then a reapply, if you get what I'm saying. Some of these applications may just be things that kids are going to, to be honest with you. They may be things that are very small. So when we get it down, I think one of the things that's good about Catch On is, is that if I'm looking for an order of operations, it tells me which ones are being used the most and those are the ones that I'm heading to first. We do have one of our instructional technology facilitators who's going to be associated with like wrangling this. And so, and she actually really loves this work. So this is like her deal. And so to be honest with you, I think we'll look at most common, district purchased ones, most common ones, and then continue to work down the list. But I do kind of wonder a little bit about a grand reset. And I will say this is that when these rules come in, I don't think they necess, like, I think it's a great cause, like do not get me wrong. Like I think the, the purpose and the intent is true. But it does keep anybody from being able to do anything they want at any time, right? And so that may feel like a reduction in autonomy when it's really us just being responsible with the data. I think most teachers, obviously, most teachers have it in their heart to do that. They just don't know as much about this. So I think we're going to be guided on it. I think at some particular point though, where I get to a hard stop, if a, if a company goes, we're not going to sign this data sharing agreement. Then I think at some particular point, we have to make a very honest decision to block them, because they are web-based, right? And so at that particular point, I think if they go, no, we're not doing this, then I think we have to, I think there's a wall at some particular point, if you get what I'm saying. I don't anticipate that to be a problem. If they refuse it, they were probably doing something weird anyway.
Thank you.
All right. Excellent. So based on this list, lots and lots of applications. Some are probably very valuable and some maybe we've looked at and go, why, why, why that one? So is this now an opportunity for us as a district to kind of say, this is one that doesn't make any sense? Because either it's not standards aligned or curriculum aligned, or maybe this is a duplicate function that we would rather teachers do elsewhere or?
I, I think, I think we need a little bit of time. I think what I'm seeing is a lot of, because it is so, like with, it's kind of, it's just fascinating, right? You deploy this thing and then two days before Christmas, you got like, you're looking at 800 applications, all of a sudden, and stuff like that. So the quickness. But I think there is a lot of noise in it that a kid just goes somewhere. And it might be, like I will tell you, like we see a spike during lunch with cool math games. Like I'm just being honest with you. Like you all do was there, right?
Chase loves that.
And then there's like, and there's like four million variations of cool math games. So how many of them are that? I think that is a fair question. What we are seeing and good news is, is that what I was reassured by, to be honest with you, is I see tons of Google Classroom, I see tons of Alex, I see tons of iReady, so the mainline applications. And then at the fringe, I see these other applications. So I think the question would be like, yeah, I think at some particular point, there is that question. I, I think we need a little bit more time with the metrics. And one of the things that we are working with Catch On, because David does amazing work with Data Studio and Google, is that we're looking for an export out of Catch On so we can really slice and dice the data we want to, the way we want to. And I think we'll have better analytics than, than they may have completely built in, because he's just able to do wizard stuff. But, but I do think that's a conversation.
Can I ask a clarifying question though? And I'm with you. Like I think I, I know exactly where you're going with this. But you just stated this isn't to be like a Big Brother thing, like we're watching you. So if they are to the end of privacy and that we're capturing student data appropriately, what extent then do you feel that the authority to say, no, you're not going to use this app is going to apply? Would that not be instructional decisions that needs to take place?
Well, I do think they're instructional decisions for, for sure. Again, I always defer to myself as the head nerd, so I don't have to make those instructional decisions. But I do think that is a, I think that is a fair question. I think the metrics are still forming and I think we need to work on the analytics piece to some extent. But I do think, again, it is interesting what the state did. They went after the free applications. Like that seems to be where they really drew, because I think that's where they were more interested in.
But I, but can't you see that though? Because so many ads do pop up and our kids are clicking those ads. And what are they doing with the data? So I don't, you know, I don't, again, I think that the.
I think the bottom line was whether or not whichever is offering these free, free access to these apps or software companies, that they, they have to sign the.
What are you doing with the data? Right. That's right. So we're going to protect the data.
So it's really not us saying no, it's whether or not the company itself is going to, to say, here's what we do with the data. Here's what we're not going to do with the data. And if you're interested, it was really, of course, we don't have time today, but at the principal's meeting, he went into the software and we had a chance to look at some of the, it, it tells you not only what all of the software that's in our system, but how many times it's accessed and where it's being accessed.
Yeah, that'd be a really cool, right?
So it's a lot of really good data. And it was very interesting, I think, to leaders to see that really the most, everything was pretty standard or common. And then you'd have the one-offs.
But like to your point, Mr. Dodd, as a school principal, I would 100% want to see that information and have that conversation with my staff. I just don't know what our voice is in that, like.
Yeah, no, I, I think this is one of those future steps that I'd be really encouraging the district to look at is, okay, now we know that they've got these 37 different apps for math. Okay, wait a second here, timeout. Which one is the best one should you be using? And similarly, I guess, not only from the instructional side, but also messaging. So this is a concern I've always long seen as a parent, is that, okay, I've got, I've got five kids, right? That's a lot of kids. And with that, they have a lot of teachers. And every teacher's using this messaging and this messaging and this messaging and this message. And suddenly I'm getting messages in 12 different places and in a variety of apps.
I will tell you that, or I just don't see them.
And so, you know, whether you're using ClassDojo or Remind, or are you sending it through Skyward Messaging? Or, you know, it's coming from so many places that are either district or non-district approved apps. And I don't know how to maintain that from a public record standpoint, because we have no idea what the teacher. And I, and I've seen some stories, you know, in other districts where teachers have had inappropriate communications with students through a lot of those apps. And so we have no idea what they're saying. So like, is this an opportunity also to talk about this from the communication side of things?
I do think that. I think one of the things that is very extensive is, is that because of the nature of being web-based, like so whenever you're kind of in charge of an IT department, one of the challenges is how do you filter, right? Like you could block everything and just allow certain things, but that's going to make for a pretty lousy experience, right? And so the question is, is that if you go with where you're blocking based on categories such as, you know, hate speech, pornography, things of that nature, it's hard. These gray areas where you're like, should this be used as opposed to it hitting one of those hard filters is a little bit tricky, right? And so you tend to be where you're kind of open on, okay, this platform is available. However, what we have had direct conversations, and I know David's received several emails about it. It's like, because it's not blocked by a filter, it's assumed to be approved by the district and that's not the same thing, for the record. It's just that the filter allows it and then you kind of get into, like I said, a kind of a gray area. I think, I, I think this does kind of sort of shift the locus of control. I think the analytics will be very useful to school leaders. And like I said, because it does, tells you even to the classroom level where it's being used, then time of the engagements, things of that nature.
Interesting.
So, so one of my other big surprises was one of my kids' abilities to go in and create some accounts, for instance, with some fundraisers that schools are doing. You know, he was been harping on me for days and I was kind of slow on it. I didn't get it done in time. So he took care of it himself. And I go, wow, you were able to do all that all by yourself? So I guess I'm thinking, okay, now from a parent's side of, of these things, how many times could a, could a kid, and you know, what he went to was innocent enough, but how many times does a kid have the capability of going in and signing up for something without my opt-in or out?
So just to make sure I'm kind of clear on the question, like I think, I think one of the things is that I think the privacy, I think actually the privacy, like new rules actually sort of solve this issue, right? That information that that student is putting in is student, student data. And the way they talked about it is, is that is it, is it being required or is it being used in classroom instruction, right? And so, or, and I assume, listen, just because the rule was written kind of quickly, I assume they mean extracurricular activities and anything that's school related, right? And so my line of thought is, is that like I do kind of have an open question. We get those requests and we get to be the, we have the advantage of being the wet blanket, right? Which is that, hey, we have some concerns about this and they can be varied. And a lot of times they go, yeah, but I really want to use it, right? However, I think this privacy thing, what it allows us to do and what it allows districts to do is address this issue correctly. And that this is a student privacy thing. So the first question I have is, is that it needs to go under review. It needs to get one of these data sharing agreements, because I need to know what they're doing with that data. And then I think there are going to be some conversations now that we have a catalogs, because when you had allowed us to purchase this, I think it was right, it might have been the first meeting in December or so. It was like right then and there. So this program's relatively new in its use. The question was, is if we look at the logs of a filter, they circle the room like 500 times for like two kids or something like that, because the kids are constantly looking stuff up. There's no way to parse that data. However, this allows us to target, okay, that application's being used and now we can start having those conversations. So I think that is the logical next step, now that we actually have something in, something in existence that catalogs all these web-based applications.
So as a parent, I'll, I'll have the ability to go in and look at all 1,268 of these things and choose which ones I want to opt in or out of? Or how, how's that going to work?
Yes. And you, if you see me sighing, it's because you're right. And it's also because of what the state is requiring. So like that, there's not a lot of free will in that per se. And that, when you, when you put it like that, it makes me not want to do it. But the thing I was going to say is, is that, but, but, but again, if I look at the general pattern of opt-outs in the past, they have not been heavy. I think the state is saying that we have to provide that opportunity. To what degree that opportunity will you take advantage of, I'm not sure. But yes, you will be able to do a searchable. You will be able to see the privacy agree- But yes, you will be able to do a searchable, you will be able to see the privacy agreements, the terms of, all that will be coming soon to a website near you.
So now, now, obviously, some of these are contingent on, there, there's gotta be some data, right? You, you talk about having to plug a kid's name into a roster, so iReady is, is a great example of that. So if, if a parent chooses to opt out of that, then what? How do we, do we feel optimistic they're gonna be able to create a platform in which